The 27th, and we're in Santa Barbara. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Ms. Contrask, do we have the TV coverage announcement, please?
Thank you. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, Channel 20, at 9:00 AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Andres Valley, Santa Maria and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV, Channel 20. For the roll call, Commissioner Boyson?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Cooney?
Here.
Commissioner Smizer?
Here.
Commissioner Valencia?
Here. All right, thank you very much. Ms. Black, the Agenda Status Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I think the only change in the agenda this morning, the agenda's noted that item number two will be continued to October 25th, that's our recommendation. We learned this morning that item number three may need to be continued as well. Apparently Ms. Casio is not available for this hearing, and I think there's a representative here who's going to be requesting a continuance. The other items are ready to go for the Commission today.
All right, thank you. And could you go on to the projection report?
Certainly. Well, first of all, we've been talking about this, the kind of status of your upcoming agendas, and the fact that your agendas are pretty full, and I indicated to the Commission that I would be checking with the staff to make sure that the projects that are on the projection report are realistic, and to ensure that the Commission's busy schedule's not inhibiting cases from being scheduled. And I think I've confirmed both of those. We've moved a few things around on the Agenda Status Report, so I'm hopeful that this is a pretty accurate reflection of the Commission's upcoming work. And it doesn't appear that there's a tremendous amount of pent-up demand for the Commission's time, so I think we're in pretty good shape, although the agendas are fairly tight. So having said that, next week you have a fairly full agenda with three items on at six hours, and that'll be in Santa Barbara. Then you have about four and a half hours on October 11th, so there is some time on that date if things need to be continued. October 25th is getting to be quite full, it's in Santa Barbara. Reminder about the ethics training that's going to be held on October 27th, that's indicated on your projection report, just for your information, and that's going to be in both the Santa Barbara and Santa Maria locations in the Board Hearing Room and video conference between, from 9:00 to 12:00. Then you've got a regular meeting on November 1st and November 8th, and two special meetings in November, tentatively scheduled, one on November 16th, which is a Monday, and that'll be to take up the IV Master Plan program, and then additional hearing that we've discussed previously on November 29th, to hopefully continue on with the IV Master Plan and take care of a project or two as well. We won't be meeting Thanksgiving week, November 22nd, so that November 29th in effect substitutes for that. And then we've got our holiday lunch on December 6th, and December 13th is already full at six hours.
All right, thank you. And I'd like to go back to Friday, October 27th.
Sure.
Do we call, if there's three of us, do we call a meeting to order, or what happens?
Mr. Chair, no, I don't believe it's necessary to call a meeting to order. You can congregate, all five of you, in a place, as long as you're not communicating about items that would be coming before the Commission, and this is really just a training for all of you.
Okay. And that's just considered a regular meeting for special meeting?
It's not a meeting, it's just a training.
A training meeting?
Right. So you don't need to call your, we're not going to notice the meeting, we're not going to agendize. This is just informational for you.
Okay.
It's not a meeting of the Commission.
All right, thank you. Any questions on any of these items? All right, if not, we'll go on to public comment. If there's anybody here who'd like to speak on anything that's not on today's agenda, please come forward, or in Santa Maria. Is there somebody in Santa Maria? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go on to Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Does anybody have anything to report today? Appears not. We'll go on to Planning and Development Divisional Briefings. Do we have anything, Ms. Meister?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have any divisional briefings this morning.
All right. And we'll go on to the minutes of September 6th, 7th, 13th, which will be considered today. I think we've had a request to continue these because they haven't had a chance to review them. What's the wishes of the Commission?
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we just continue these for one week to give us a chance. I didn't get these until yesterday, and just didn't have a chance to review them properly.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I'll second the motion. Mr. Chair, with regard to the minutes, I just observed in reviewing them last night that we do, and I think it is our practice, to refer to items that we have decided by incorporation, by reference to the staff report and the exhibits to the staff report. And check with staff this morning, it appears that a complete record of our action as taken is kept by staff, by hearing support staff, in the form of the action letters. So when we approve our minutes, we don't have the specific action spelled out, the findings, the evidence that we took, but we're referring to an item that is kept by staff, I am assured. So that's important, I think, as we go through these.
All right, thank you very much. And was there a second to those? All right, Ms. Contrask, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries 5-0.
All right, and with that, we'll go on to the Director's Report and Board of Supervisors' Hearing Summary. Mr. Baker?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, yesterday, long meeting, but the Board did approve the Rancho Danza del Sol Horse Commercial Facility that had been continued previously with a, some contention, but it, not between the Board members, but with regard to the appellant, but they did overturn the appeal and approved the facility. The height ordinance that was before you, a couple of meetings back, presented by Doug Anthony, was done in about 30 seconds, I believe. I mean, because they said they had seen the staff report and they were trying to get through by 5:00 o'clock. The long one was the golf course one at Rancho San Marcos, which was approved by the Board, and the appeal of the Arroyo Honda Steelhead Project was continued. And that was done because of the very long public comment at the front end of the meeting with regard to the Isla Vista evictions that were taking, that are about to take place. And there were a number of people there to speak, and so they bumped over the Steelhead Project, so we'll be hearing that next Tuesday. I wanted to offer to the Commission any comments, and I'd be happy to receive comments from you with regard to our presentations, our staff reports, everything. I'd like to make sure that what we're presenting to you makes your decision-making as easy as possible. I'm not looking, I mean, constructive criticism is fine, I'm not just looking for complaints, but if there's any constructive criticism on the way that we present our items here at the Commission, or in the staff reports that can make it clear, help you out, we, I would appreciate hearing that, and we will try and make those changes. I recognize that a lot of stuff gets put into attachments and such, and sometimes, as Commissioner Cooney was talking about attachments, it reminded me that, you know, when I started looking at them, sometimes it's difficult to figure out where you are sometimes because of the myriad of things that we have to go through in terms of giving you a full report. But I'd like to encourage you, if you've got any ideas, we'd be happy to take them. And lastly, I don't whether ever said it, but you know, we have a vacancy of our Deputy Director in Devera South, and Diane is doing that, and so with the Commission meetings that are going to be taking place in Santa Maria, I'm going to be asking Zarida to be the Secretary up there, because it's just taking too much time away from her in Devera South. So I'm very confident in Zarida and her abilities to work with you when you are in Santa Maria, and she will be happy to take those kinds of comments, as anything she can do to help you with Santa Maria hearings, and we'll, glad to hear those also.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We have a question here from Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Baker, last week I brought to Diane's attention that one of the items we saw, and I'm sorry, I can't remember, the, when the staff report was being written, the way the consistency analysis was presented was a different format, and it was very difficult to read it since we're, since this is a very effective format that you have, it's easy to read and go over. So I would just ask that when staff writes, is it there all in the same format? Just helps continuity. Thank you.
I agree. Commissioner Cooney, thank you.
Thanks, thanks very much, Mr. Baker, for your offer, and we certainly appreciate your presence here. I'm, Ms. Black's driving to Santa Maria for me, but...
It's only for a short time.
Oh, okay. But aside from that, the timing of this question really is unrelated to your offer, but more to your report of the Board's action. In listening to part of the debate about the adoption of the Sandy Nez Community Plan, I was wondering at staff's projection of the overall process, and when the Planning Commission might expect to first have the opportunity to review that plan. I realize there's, the environmental review process is just beginning, but I had no sense of how long that might take.
As I understand it, talking with the comprehensive planning folks, that we're really looking at probably sometime February, March of next year. By the time it gets through the IR, hearing, noticing, and all that kind of stuff, I mean, in terms of it, but that's, that was my understanding, but I'll ask John McInnes for an update, and if it changes, we'll have that for you next week.
Just one quick follow-on question. This is not so much to be answered now, but we've had a number of discussions already about the septic systems in the Sandy Nez Valley, and I can't remember if we asked staff to determine whether the plan as currently undergoing environmental review specifically discusses the waste disposal issue and problems that have been encountered in the Sandy Nez General Plan area.
We, I'll get to that answer also.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I had two issues. One, at the last meeting, we had a number of projects coming out of Los Alamos, and Los Alamos is in the process now of doing a community plan update. And my concern is that when projects are actually going to come forward to the Planning Commission that will be in the study area of the Los Alamos Community Plan, I would appreciate if staff would contact La PAC, Chris Rather, and find out if the PAC is interested in looking at this and weighing in on it. I understand that we don't want to hold up applicants coming before this body. The last time, at least one of the projects, we just put it on the consent agenda, we did discuss it. But it would be nice to know whether or not the community is interested in these projects. Sometimes it's a six-way lot split, sometimes it's a four-way lot split. In both of the cases that we had last Commission meeting, it dealt with road abandonment issues, all of which really go to elements of the plan that they're revising. Moreover, I think that it's important that the community feel like they're not being piecemealed while they're making their plans. And I did receive a number of calls from folks in Los Alamos concerned about this issue, so I'm passing it on, not that we slow down the process, but that we give the PAC the opportunity to weigh in if they so desire. And I understand that the PAC really is just now getting going, and I'm not, this is not a criticism of staff, this is a, I think, trying to be sensitive to the wishes of the community in Los Alamos. We discussed how many communities would really like to be able to revise their community plans, or to get community plans, so when we have a community that is in the process, it seems appropriate that we give them the opportunity to decide whether these lot splits and issues are germane to the issue that they're looking at and they're revise. I have one other issue, if you want to just go ahead and...
With regard to items from last week, there were three that we referred to. I thought there were three. There were two on the agenda, plus another one, and the response we got back was that two out of the three, we're not interested. It was Joseph Place, I believe, was the, that's the third one that they did want to take a look at, but the other two, they said could go forward.
Great, thank you very much. It's the asking that's the important part.
Right. Mr. Chair, just, Commissioner Smizer, just to clarify a bit more, you'll notice on your October 11th agenda, we've moved up those two items that you continued, we're going to re-notice them so that the applicants aren't held up on both main Alamos tentative parcel map and the Jackson tract map.
Thank you.
To try and get those resolved, because we did hear back from the La PAC regarding the projects that they wanted to see. We will also be discussing more, in more detail at their first meeting, those projects that they would like to see, and these were actually forwarded to them, and they didn't choose to comment on them, but they haven't been, this is their first formal meeting as well, so it's a, you know, it's a little bit of a rough time, but we are trying to ensure that we coordinate as much as possible with them.
Commissioner Smizer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One other question that I have, and I don't mean to beat this issue to death, Commissioner Cooney raised it as well, is the issue that we discussed about the septic problems in the county. My take on this was that the state was actually requesting, and we don't generally get this that often, but that the state was actually begging us to come up with standards. I know that in the past, the, perhaps the Board hasn't been as excited about creating those new standards, and perhaps legitimately so, expecting the state to finish its work. But I think that in the meantime, this waiting process between the time the state actually comes forward with standards, and we had the Water Quality Control Board officials telling us that they're uncertain that these standards are going to come forward, they will eventually. That was the best that they could, could come up with. In the interim, we have our own county officials saying, "We need standards." And this Commission here, when we receive projects in these sensitive areas, and the best that we get is, "Oh, any conventional septic system will work." And yet the state, in their testimony, is saying, "No, that's really not what you should be putting in there." We're left in the middle, trying to advise project applicants about the effectiveness of systems that we have no standards for. And I just think that this is an untenable position for us, particularly where we have so many special problems areas in the Sandy Nez Valley, and throughout the county, that we really need to have some standards. So I, I don't know how much more to request, other than, you know, whether or not we can have your input on this, as to whether or not we, the county can go forward with creating some standards. I know that EHS has said that they already have them, they've already produced them, but we haven't adopted them. And so I'm in a, I don't know where to go with this, Mr. Chair, and I guess I'm looking for direction and assistance.
Mr. Baker, or Ms. Black, would you have a response?
Mr. Chair, just a conversation I had with, with Mr. Jensen after the meeting. He called me a few days later and asked me how I thought it went, and then said, "Well, what do you think the Commission wants us to do?" So at least he knows what you want him to do, and I think that'll help in their discussions within the Department about where and how to go forward on the standards. Just to have some indication that the Commission remains very interested in the issue.
They've been very slow in responding to us in the past, probably a very heavy workload for Mr. Jensen. However, with your emphasis on that we're very concerned about this, and it's a big impact in the Sandy Nez Valley, perhaps we'll get some responses. I have an item, I'll, go ahead.
And I'll go back and make sure that they know that the importance that you're placing on.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. And I too concur with Commissioner Brown that occasionally we get a quick and dirty little report, you know, and it's hard to interpret, is this a port, is this a, what does it mean, because it's not in the standard format? And I would think that when they have a report of that nature, they would still use the same numbers, and under issue summary, they would tell what it is that they're trying to do. And I understand, the others, they could just put, "To be determined, to be determined," but we know, we can read the format very easily. And then the other part that I have, second part to Commissioner Brown's, is that sometimes the maps and the directions are difficult. I had four sites, two sites in Los Alamos, and two sites in, one in Los Olivos and one in Sandy Nez, the previous week, and let me tell you, it took me about four to five hours to find those sites, and I should have been, been able to do all that in three hours, and it just took a long time to find these sites. We need a little bit better direction. I know sometimes it's difficult, some of the remote areas, but just a little bit more. You have to remember that the planner has been working with a project for a year and a half, and we have seven days from, or six days from the day we get our material, and then we have, in our own window, one or two days to quickly try and get there, and sometimes it's very difficult. So we'd appreciate some help there.
Just as a tag on that, Chairman Valencia, I've asked Diane and Zarida both that in our staff reports, especially in the summary section, if you will, we need to write them as if we're writing them for the general public, so that they will, so people can read it and understand, what's the project, what's, what's the issue, you know, what's our recommendation, such, so it's, I write it, provide it in citizen's ease instead of planter's ease, which we tend, all of us tend to, you know, I've got some lawyers around here. You know how we write things the way that we think, and we think everybody else thinks that way, and it's just not correct. We've got to write it for the general public, and so we're making efforts to change that. I mean, so you may see even a little bit of change in format to get us there.
Short of GPS. Yes. All right, Commissioner Brown, I mean, Commissioner Boyson?
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Chair, you know, I've suffered similar frustration to Commissioner Valencia, while I can always go to MapQuest or Google Search or something like that to find an address, I usually end up going to my Thomas Guide to find specific. Is there, do we have a copyright problem or something with just Xeroxing, or copy, don't use the Xerox, please? Photocopying the Thomas Guide page and put it in the staff report?
I wouldn't think so, in terms of a copyright. I don't know the legal answer to that question. I wouldn't think so.
It just seems that that would be so much easier than some of the, some of those maps that were provided just are useless, they don't show cross streets, and, yeah.
Actually, Ms., the Chair and I discussed the Thomas Guide issue, and I offered to purchase Thomas Guides for anybody who doesn't have a current one as well, just to help you out.
Yeah.
But we can, we can, we can try and do a better job at providing maps.
I think it'd be cheaper to, just as Commissioner Boyson, excuse me for interrupting, but that's absolutely a great idea, reproducing that page and just putting it in there, because we're looking at it instead of us carrying the document, you know? That's great. All right.
With respect to the staff report formats, I think we have corrected the issue that Ms. Brown noted last week. I think the planner who had prepared the staff report used a proto that we used for the zoning administrator. Actually, we're not even going to use that proto for the zoning administrator anymore, because it takes the staff more time to prepare, and that's certainly not the direction we want them to go. So I think we've addressed that issue, and you should really only see material in your packets in two forms. One would be the original staff report in the proto that you're very familiar with, and the second would be in a memo form when there's additional information at a continued hearing. That's, that's really about the only thing you should see in your packet.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cooney?
Just, thank you, Mr. Baker. Again, I know you opened the door yourself, and consciously perhaps didn't expect as many comments as you got now and will get in the future, but we think about these things all the time, and it's very, very helpful to have the kind of staff support we have had, and look forward to having. And on the positive side, I've worked with these staff reports for over two years now, and I think it is probably my legal training, but I'm looking upfront for the issues involved in the, in the project, and they're there, and it's not difficult to read, and I think the format is really serving us well. As you go deeper into the staff report, you get into more and more detail, but within the first couple of pages, you can pretty well size up whether this is going to be problematic or not. And so in terms of tinkering, I welcome experiments, but, but I do like the current format in terms of getting the information early in the report and not getting lost in the details before you understand the issues.
Thank you.
Yeah, and my response, Commissioner Cooney, is, is that I won't even, want to make sure it is upfront where people can see it, because sometimes if you can see it right there, it may be, if you are familiar with the case generally, but then you see it right there, you don't need to go through all the detail. My experience has been is that sometimes you get pushed. I mean, I look at sometimes your agendas, and I know that there's an awful lot of stuff there, so it's our job to make sure that we try and summarize for you as much as possible, and allow you to go into that detail for the stuff that you want to really look for.
All right, thank you very much. Any further comments?
One other comment, I forgot. Yesterday, we, when we did the golf course project, we did it long distance with the planner, and the reason was, and it turned out it was very fortuitous, because number one, the planner that was on the case got called to jury duty at noon, and so we had to have somebody else step in. Because of the, because of the way that it was delayed, we were expecting to be there by maybe even the noon hour getting started on a hearing. It ended up starting at 4:00 o'clock. But we did it long distance, and I had made that decision before the meeting with the intent, because it, you know, I appreciate that when you guys have to drive back and forth, it's, it's two hours each, when you figure one way, and then, or one hour one way, and another hour coming back. But we start losing a lot of productivity time with our staff people, and so I've said, you know, I want to do as much of that as we can through the long distance. We'll have the, the overheads, wherever you're having the meeting, we'll have the PowerPoints there, and somebody will operate them, but, but the planner won't necessarily have to move. Now, most of the time, we're trying to have your planners in the north, presenting in the north, and the planners in the south, so it's not as big a problem. But for the Board, it really becomes problematic, and so we tried, yesterday it worked, and I talked with the Board Chairman after, she was quite happy with the way it went, and said, you know, and when I explained why we were doing it, she was more than supportive because of, anything I can do to get more out of our planners in that eight-hour day, the more we're going to try and do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Smizer?
I hate to be the attorney in the group. I wouldn't feel comfortable with you photocopying Thomas Guide, that's not in the public domain, it's got a copyright, and if it's going to become a part of the public record, which it is, I think what you need to, you need to either use one that is, like MapQuest, and most of the time, although MapQuest is maybe not quite as up-to-date on the small arterial roads, at least gives, points you in the right direction. So I'd recommend you do that, and then if...
And then if the offer is still open on the Thomas Guides, I think that my Thomas Guide probably is about 10 years old, so that might be something that we could just pass on to future commissioners as they, as they work their way through the system. I think it's not a bad idea to have them available.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Smizer, thank you. We'll go ahead and order them, you know, and don't worry about returning them if and when your term ends. I'm sure by that time, it'll be time to buy a new one, so.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we concluded our administrative agenda. We'll take a short, two-minute break to set up for our first item. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, yes, I think what we wanted to do was to hear from the representative on item number three, which is the Goodman addition appeal. And I think we probably need to read that into the record.
All right.
Before we can take that up.
Ms. Contreras, could you please read item number three into the record, please?
Thank you. The following is the hearing on the request of Matt Clark, attorney for Pilar Casso, to consider the appeal, case number 06APL20, application filed on June 26, 2006, of the planning and development department's decision to approve land use permit 06LUP555.
Thank you very much. Any sites, visits, or ex parte? Commissioner Brown.
Site visit this morning, but no ex parte.
Commissioner Boyson.
You have a site visit.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Cooney.
I also went by the site, Mr. Chair.
And Commissioner Smizer.
I also went. I also went by the site.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go on to Ms. Elmer. Ms. Tuttle are not here, but Ms. Meester, you'll handle that.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would suggest that you call upon the representative on this case to hear the request.
Are you Mr. Greg Goodman?
I don't know if the appellant is here or aware. Okay, you are. Good. Okay. So it sounds like both sides are represented, and we can decide whether or not to move this item to another date or if we want to hear it today.
Are both sides requesting that it be continued?
I'm not clear on that.
They're not.
So do you want to do this now, or do you want to take it up in order?
Well, if they're not all here and it's item number three, I think we better wait. Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, when I suggested we take this out of turn, it was in the assumption that we had an agreement regarding the continuance. If there's not an agreement, then I think it has to wait until we get to it on the agenda.
Very good. All right. With that, sorry.
Sorry about that.
We'll go on back to item number one. Could you read item number one into the record, please, Ms. Contreras?
Thank you. The following is the hearing on the request of Chris Price, agent for the owners, Lee Breaching and John James Delverson, to consider case number 04RMM2, application filed on February 20, 2004, and to accept the negative declaration 84ND005 as adequate environmental review for case number 04RMM02 pursuant to Section 15162 of the state guidelines for the implementation of SEQA.
All right. Thank you very much. Any site visits or ex parte? Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, this matter has been before the commission previously on two occasions, and I did take the occasion to drive by it a third time, though I don't want Supervisor Centeno to hear that, and I certainly don't intend to claim reimbursement.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Previously made a site visit, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And previously, I had visited that area too. All right. And with that, let's go on to Ms. Elmer? No, oh, I'm sorry, Tina Ryder.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. Tina Ryder, the project planner. The proposed recorded map modification has been before your commission twice, once in July and once in August. The agent requested a continuance in July in response to concerns expressed by Mr. Fazio, the adjacent neighbor to the north, who wanted to review the staking in the fields, that he could understand how a new house would affect his views. Since then, the applicant, I mean, the agent and Mr. Fazio have met in the field. Mr. Fazio has no concerns with the proposed recorded map modification. In August, the agent sought a continuance so as to obtain input from the agricultural preserve advisory committee as to placement of the septic system. The request was to place the septic system and its 100% expansion area outside the development envelope for the home. The site itself is under an agricultural preserve contract, and the limitations on development are 10,000 square feet. The agricultural preserve advisory committee at its August 11 meeting did review and discuss the request, indicated that, yes, septic systems could be located outside of the development envelope, so long as there was no interference with the agricultural production on the remainder of the site. They discussed the placement and the depth of the septic system and indicated they saw no interference with the growing of crops on the site. This picture just shows where the property is located, at 336 Toro Canyon Road, approximately 1,000 feet southeast of the intersection of Fith Hill Road and Toro Canyon. With respect to the onsite septic system, the agent requested relief from strict application of the uniform rules and approval to place the septic system outside the building envelope. We do have, in your memorandum today, on page two, two condition modifications. One would be condition number one, as it defines the project. In the fifth paragraph of condition one, we have added that the onsite private septic system is to be within proximity to the northerly property line and to be at least 300 feet north of the Garapata Creek environmentally sensitive habitat area. This recommendation is partially in response to the planning commission's concerns regarding location and proximity to the creek, as well as identifying a general area where the development is going. It's roughly 300 feet north of the creek, ESH, and that's the general area where the perk tests have been performed. This is the map showing that the recorded map modification is to move the gray area right here, the development envelope, approximately 50 feet to the east, and to reconfigure it from a 100 by 100 dimension to be 80 by 120. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. We'd like to recommend three things: adopt the required findings, accept the SEQA determination, and conditionally approve the recorded map modification as revised conditions number one and number nine on page two of your memorandum. By way of background for the record, I just wanted to indicate that the SEQA findings we had read in before, that we are going to strike on page A1, the last sentence, under review of, under Section 1.2, review of previously prepared negative deck, that the negative deck reflects the independent judgment of the planning commission. County council had asked us just to delete that from these findings.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ryder, would you explain again where that is on page A1 and just review what you said?
The last sentence on page A1.
Okay.
With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do have the agent, Chris Price, here.
And that last sentence reads, "The ND reflects the independent judgment of the planning commission and is adequate for its proposal." Is this what you mean?
Yes, that's precisely.
Is it the little on the left? All right, at the bottom of the page. All right, thank you. Any question? Commissioner Boyson.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ryder, and this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with this, you have down that the uniform rules limitation on the size of a lot is 10,000 square feet.
Yes.
Would that, would that change with the revisions that we're going to be looking at? That'll be, that'll be the same, right?
All right, thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder, on the new attachment C, page two, that you gave us, the very top line says revised conditions, please note deletions are shown and strikeout, a new language is shown in bold. Well, there is neither, and I'm just wondering if that's of significance, or should there have been, or it's, everything on the page is new, is that correct? It's new language?
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I'll answer. What happened was, when it was turned in, we did have strikeout and bold, and then those were all removed so that you could just read the language as it's going to be a part of the condition, just to simplify it.
All right.
And the deletion should have also included the please note. You had strikeout and bold in the last set, and this is just how the fifth paragraph would read of condition one, and most of the language is already there, except previously it said that the septic system had to be located within the development envelope. Now we're just saying outside. And for condition number nine, the same thing. We had a restriction of what could occur within the development envelope and what could occur outside. We had to modify it just to say you can have septic outside.
Okay.
I hope that clarifies, and I apologize.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
While we're focusing on the septic system, Ms. Ryder, as I read the staff report, basically the staff was relying on the 1984 analysis of the ability of this particular site to absorb a septic system, and then that information was updated by Environmental Health Services in May of this year in connection with this map modification. What wasn't clear to me, and I'd like to have cleared up, is whether the Toro Canyon septic system requirements of redundant systems are being imposed on this project or not, as it's currently proposed.
To clarify, yes, the redundant system is being proposed, where you have another system installed, so you've got duality. And what Paul Jensen with Environmental Health Services had indicated was, in Toro Canyon, he did get to put in place the new state standards, and you have two systems and a diverter valve, so that if there's any indication of failure, you switch it and you start using the second system. And by way of background, that's why the agent was saying that the leach field, the area that it takes up is quite large, once you double it, and you consider the soil conditions as well. So that's why he asked for relief, to put it outside the development envelope, which is what we're recommending be done.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ryder, just, and this may not pertain, but it's just interesting, I'm sure that when the ag advisory, or the ag preserve advisory committee looks at these, they do consider whether, how the septic systems interfere or do not interfere with ag.
That is correct.
And so there's some science behind all that, and
Yes.
if you grow crops on it, and so on and so forth, and.
The ag, the agricultural preserve advisory committee did have that discussion. They reviewed both the findings of the soils report, plus area conditions, plus the requirements for growing
Okay.
of crops, and the depth of those roots, and the placement of the leach field below it. And they did make a finding, in this particular instance, that, yes, there was no interference.
Okay, good. That's why I needed to know. Thank you so much for that clarification.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll open, bring Mr. Price, the applicant. Good morning, Mr. Price.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Couple points of clarification. First, just for the record, the July continuance was requested by Mr. Fazio, not myself. We had requested the August continuance. Also, point of clarification, the Toro plan requires not a double redundant system, but rather a triple redundant system, that being two septic systems installed, another 100% area set aside in the event that both those septic systems fail. Hence, our requirement, our request to have, you know, additional flexibility on the site to install that 300% area. With that, reading the condition, we appreciate staff's consideration of our request, as well as the ag preserve committee, knowing that typically these septic systems do not interfere with the growing of crops. It's essentially water below surface which actually acts as nutrients for most crops. However, reading the proposed condition language of condition number one, the requirement to be 300 feet from the northern boundary of Garapata Creek environmentally sensitive habitat area, I have just a quick sketch of what that relates to. Essentially, that's 450 feet from the creek. Tina, if you just want to put this up, and we have no problem meeting all of the standards. However, the existing standard is 100 feet setback. That's both the state standard and the county's ESH standard, 100 feet from top of bank. And I'm just unsure why we are being held to a much stricter standard. And again, what we end up with, the dark line, I don't know if you can see that. I had scaled this on the full-size map with my, with my scale, and then sketched it on this reduction, so you can see it. Does that, does that work?
This is the creek right here.
Yeah, the creek is on the southern boundary of the property. The solid dashed line is 400 feet from the creek. The dashed line is 450 feet. My understanding is that the setback, you're going to have to point those. Correct. That's roughly 450 feet, given 300 feet from the northern boundary of the ESH setback, which in this case is 150 feet. So as you can see, you know, we don't have a lot of room to work with here for a septic system. So all I'm asking is that we be, that the project be held to the same standards as every other project in the county, that being the existing state standard of 100 feet from top of bank, and as well as the county's ESH standard of 100 feet from top of bank. And again, all we're looking for is flexibility, so we can design the best system that works the best.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Price, I'm sure you're aware that the slope of the site is southward in the direction of the creek.
Correct.
So I took the recommendation for the additional distance to account for the fact that there was going to be a tendency of the effluent to move downhill toward, in the direction of the creek. Now, if what you represent there is accurate, and we're cramming it up into the top, what, 20% of the property, there may be the ability to make some accommodation, but I do think that we need to expand beyond the minimum in this case due to the slope of the site and the tendency of the leach field
Sure.
effluent to move downhill.
I understand. Well, given the slope, the slope on site's about 2%. It's virtually flat, although it does slope to the south towards the creek. If you're on site, it's in the range of 2% to 4%, 4% maximum across the entire site. And to the best of my knowledge, the 100-foot setback is employed even on slopes where it's upwards of 10 or 15%, knowing that as water migrates underground, there's a natural filtration process that occurs, and daylighting of septic effluent on a site like this is highly unlikely. Again, we would just like to be held to the same standard, or whatever works. to be held to the same standard, or whatever works. Perhaps there could be some condition modification that says that when we design the system, when we come in for a CDP for a single-family home, the placement and design shall be reviewed by ESH to ensure compatibility with, you know, all, all standards.
Commissioner Brown has a question.
I'm, I guess I'm not knowing much about septic systems, why you would feel it's difficult for you to design a septic system within that being towards the northern portion of the boundary?
The main issue is that over time, soil conditions change. In fact, the data from 1984 that was relied upon to approve the lot split, we've done some percolation testing since then in the same location, and we've come up with completely different results. That a product of rainfall events in the last 25 years, or whatever it may be. So, our fear is that when we actually go out there to design a system, at some point in the future, when the applicant or property owner designs her home, that we may not find percolation in that limited area in the northeast corner. The other, the other concern is that there is another creek on the eastern property line. It's not named, but it is treated as an ESH. So, if we were to set back the minimum 100 feet from that northeast property line, we might be held up with no space.
Didn't, when the ag preserve advisory committee looked at this, though, didn't they consider the soils in that particular area? And now, if you want to move this, won't that, won't it have to go back before that committee to?
Their assumption was looking at the entire site.
Oh, the parcel, all right.
The entire site.
Okay.
And in their experience, that knowing that subsurface effluent really doesn't have an effect on crops, in fact, it can be a benefit in some situations.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Boyson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd actually like to hear from staff. I don't think they just picked this 300 feet out of the air. Did you have input from EHS, or how did we come up with 300 feet?
The 300 feet was arrived at based on three factors. One was the prior commission's concerns. The second was that the development itself and the prior testing is generally in that northern area. So, I just scaled the map, and it's 300 feet. Chris looked at it more precisely, saying it's 400 feet. Lastly, I did contact and spoke with Paul Jensen, and he confirmed what Chris said, that their requirements that they implement are those of the State Regional Water Quality Control Board. That's 100 feet from top of bank. Our ESH policies are 100 feet from top of bank unless the habitat extends further, then you add an additional 50 feet for 150 feet, edge of Riparian, sorry. It's 100 feet from the edge of Riparian.
All right, thank you. Ms. Pujol, did you want to?
Ms. Rider covered it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions? All right, we're going to open the public hearing. If anybody, if there's any, I'll give you a chance for a rebuttal. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public hearing. All right, so there won't be any depend, any necessary for you to rebut anything. So, we'll bring it back to the staff. Any further comments by the staff?
I would just, in closing, like to say, the two items that the project was continued for today was to change the project description to allow the septic system and the redundant systems outside of the building envelope, and then to make a determination if you wanted to settle on the 300 feet or some other number as far as a distance from Garapata Creek.
All right, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the commission. This is the first district item. Commissioner Cooney, would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I think this project has been given an opportunity to succeed by the county, looking at the incompatibility, potentially, of leach lines outside the building envelope, and I'm pleased to see that the applicant can move forward with the map modification on that basis. This last issue, which has just been raised by Mr. Price, I can see could be problematic. On the other hand, my, my greatest concern is for the welfare of the, of the nearby creek, which is a substantial drainage area, and should get as much protection as possible. So, for me to propose approval of the map modification, I would like to see an extra margin of error. I'd be willing, however, to reduce it from 300 feet from the ESH area to 250 feet, which I think should be adequate to allow the development of a septic system sufficient with current county standards. If it's not, the applicant has the ability to come back and seek a further modification on the basis of hard evidence that it can't work in that area.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Any further comments? But anybody? Seeing none. Commissioner Cooney, we're ready for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Then, I would move that the commission adopt staff's recommendation as set forth on page two of the staff report dated July 5, 2006, as modified, both in the staff report dated September 15, 2006, and with the further modification that the distance set forth in condition number
One.
one be reduced from 300 feet from the northerly boundary of Garapata Creek environmentally sensitive habitat area to 250 feet.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Smizer. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Contreras, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right, thank you very much. And that takes care of that item. Before we get set up for item number two, we'll take a short break. Come back to order. We're on item number two, the Hedrick Single Family Dwelling Demo Rebuild Appeal. Ms. Contreras, could you read that into the record, please?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of Beverly McCurdy and Autumn Brook Appellants to consider the appeal 06APL6, appeal filed on February 21, 2006, of the Planning Development Department's decision to approve land use permit 06LUP33.
Thank you very much. Any site visits or ex parte, since we already know that this is going to be continued? Ms. Almy?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you very much. Yes, the applicant actually has requested a continuance to enable her and her architect to revise the design of the house consistent with BAR direction. So, they have requested a continuance to August, October 25, and we pass that on to your commission in a letter dated September 18, '06.
All right, thank you. Is there any action required by the commission at this time, or just?
Just a continuance motion.
Okay, second district item. Could you make the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to get to the item here. Just request that we continue this item to October 25.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyson. Ms. Contreras, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Smizer?
Aye.
Mr. Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero.
All right, thank you. And we win another one. All right, item number three, the Goodman Appeal. Ms. Contreras, could you read that into, yes?
We already read that into the record, Mr. Chair, so I think we can just go forward.
All right, Ms. Almy?
Mr. Chair, I believe that there is a request for a continuance, but if you want us to give the staff presentation, we're happy to do so.
This is the second district item. Ms. Brown, how would you like to proceed on this?
I, did we not hear from the appellant? I'm, I'm somewhat confused by staff saying continuance, and the appellant here is saying no continuance.
Ms., Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I think the situation before you right now is that the appellant is requesting a continuance. The applicant would like the matter to go forward, and so it's really at the discretion of the commission. There is a representative of the appellant here who told me he would do the best he could to represent the case if the commission went forward, but he, he is requesting that it be continued. So, it's, it's really at the commission's discretion.
So, I leave it up to the commission. It would, how the commission feels. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Ms. Brown, my feeling, Commissioner Brown, my feeling is that if somebody comes here knowing that there's going to be something, and, and we're going to continue, they should still have the right to say something. We have somebody here, even though they are not proposing the project, they should still have a right to open the public hearing and let them speak.
Mr. Chair, I have a recommendation. I guess I would recommend that the commission go ahead and hear the staff presentation, hear from both sides, and then decide if you need more information or input from the appellant herself, who could not make it today. The matter, to me, it looks like a fairly simple matter, and so maybe something you can resolve without the applicant, appellant's presence.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, I would like, if, if it's the commission's desire to accept Ms. Black's recommendation, and we go forward, then.
I would.
Unless we hear otherwise.
What is the feeling of the other, Commissioner Cooney?
Yes, I feel strongly that, having read the staff report and, and the issues that are raised by the appeal, that the applicant deserves the right to have the appeal heard as soon as possible, absent some critical factor that we couldn't otherwise get without the appellant being here. I'd be in favor of moving forward.
All right, very good. Commissioner Smizer?
I would concur with that.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, Ms. Almy?
Thank you so much. Mr. Tuttle will do the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I will be brief as possible. The, just a few statistics on the project site. It's located at 4355 Kuna Drive, which is near the area where Modock and Hollister come together. The lot size is close to 14,000 square feet. It's a 10R1 zone district residential. The existing residence is 2276 square feet, which includes a garage, approximately 450 square foot garage. The proposed project, which is the subject of the appeal, is approximately 368 square foot addition, 352 square feet of which is in addition to the side of the house, which is really the subject of the appeal. And then there's another 16 square foot pop-out at the front of the house for a bay window, along with some interior remodels. These are just some images on the screen to give you a sense of the, the project site. The, the appellant's property is immediately south of the, of the subject property, and here's a little blow up. The appeal issue primarily is that the enlarged surface or roof area that would be provided with this 350 square foot addition would increase surface runoff to the neighbor's property, or to the appellant's property to the south. The issues are that there's a very gentle slope. It's nearly a flat property, but there's a very gentle slope from the northeast to the southwest across the subject parcel that does direct some runoff into the neighbor's property, as well as runoff from other areas of that neighborhood. There is no curb or gutter system along that street, so water just kind of goes where the gradient allows it to. There's really no barriers in most places. So, there would be an incremental increase in runoff with, with an additional 350 square foot addition, as, as you would imagine. The key is that not only the existing conditions of the drainage problems that are present cannot be contributed solely to the, attributed solely to the, to the single-family dwelling of the, on the subject property. Partly, the issue is that the appellant's property has significant impervious surfaces on it. There've been reports suggesting that there is improper drainage and grading slopes on that property when the, an addition was put in three or four years ago, that are contributing to the existing drainage problem that, that they do see on the property where ponding does occur during rain events. What the applicants have proposed as a solution, and the appellants have not necessarily agreed to this one way or the other, they haven't commented, in fact, is that a gravel pit be placed in the rear of the property, approximately four feet in diameter, about four feet deep, and this gravel pit would intercept roof gutter runoff from the proposed addition by way of PVC piping underground. And also, they propose to tie in an existing enclosed patio that's on the rear of the house, and tie, add a roof gutter to that, and tie in the runoff from that roof gutter into the gravel pit as well. So, theoretically, the proposed solution could actually increase, or sorry, increase the situation, or enhance the situation relative to the existing condition by decreasing runoff compared to what you see today. So, that, that is basically the, the subject of the appeal. I certainly can offer more information if necessary. This image of, blow up of the site plan shows the location of the addition on the right side of the, the house, and then just behind, below that, south of that, is the proposed gravel pit with the gutter system tying into that. I did provide just a few images of the site in case you did not have a chance to, to look at it, and I'll just run through those. This is the front of the property. As you can see, the, the street of Kuna Drive, there, there's no gutter, and it's fairly flat, but there's natural slopes that do draw water across the property and to this appellant's property. This is the rear of the unit in that cor, the, sort of, by the spa area there. Behind that is where the proposed addition would be placed. And then this is the backyard. So, there is significant area for water to percolate naturally in the landscaped lawn. There's not much permeable, or impervious surfaces in the rear of the, of the unit, so there's ample opportunity, even under existing conditions, for water to percolate naturally into the ground. This is the appellant's property, and the gate, just the left side of the driveway there is, is the southwest corner of the subject parcel, and as you can see with the natural gradient, it does slope into the appellant's property. The project, the original land use permit was approved, was found to meet the LUP findings, which are that it conforms to all policies and zoning requirements. It's a legally-created lot, and it's in compliance with all laws, rules, and regulations. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that you adopt the required findings of the project specified in attachment A of the staff report, including the SEQA findings, that you deny the appeal, thereby upholding Planning and Development's approval of a land use permit 06LUP555, and that you grant de novo approval of that land use permit as revised, subject to the conditions of approval included in attachment C. And the revisions simply are to include the gravel pit into the project description, and then also the necessary grading associated with that, which is minimal, just for the trenching, that there be some dust control conditions imposed.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Commissioner Boyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Tuttle, it, perhaps it's a sign that I've been on the commission too long when I see next-door properties coming before this commission subject of appeals. But could you refresh my memory, perhaps Ms. Almy could refresh my memory, what was the original, the original case that came before the commission here three or four years ago?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Boyson, the original case was the, the appellant's property, in this case. Ms. Caso put on an addition about three, three, four years ago, is about 2,000-plus square foot addition to their existing structure. That was about 900 square feet. The Goodmans appealed that project, that land use permit, based on neighborhood compatibility issue. It was whether or not the, the size of that structure was incompatible with the surrounding residences. I believe your commission denied that appeal and with the surrounding residences. I believe your commission denied that appeal and upheld the original approval, subject to some minor changes.
All right. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Tuttle, does the appellant's house have gutter system around the roof? I didn't...I didn't notice that. It looks like at all the runoff just comes right directly off the roof from your pictures. I was out there this morning, but I didn't look at that.
There does appear to be a gutter system in place, yes.
Even on the front portion of that building? I'm sorry, I just can't...the picture isn't...oh, okay. All right, good. All right, thank you. I wonder where that delivers the water to the...to the impermeable area?
Well, there is a small little strip of...looks like landscaped area that receives the water, and then beyond that, it just carries it to the driveway and impervious surfaces there. And it doesn't really, from what I gathered, I did...granted, I did not take a very close look, but from what I could tell from this vantage point, there's no place for the water to go once it overfills that landscaped area.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And any further questions? If not, we'll go to the appellant, Mr. Goodman. I'm sorry, Mr. Matt Clark?
Actually, yeah. Good morning. My name is Max Matis. I work with Matt Clark, who is unable to attend here.
Okay. What is your name again?
Max Matis, M-A-T-T-H-I-E-S. It's the spelling of my last name. And I work with Matt Clark, who is unable to attend, and Mrs. Caso is having surgery at this time in Los Angeles and also unable to attend. So we had requested that we have a continuance. However, I understand the Goodmans want to go forward with this, and so I'll do my best to address any issues here this morning. There is, however, with the Caso residence, I just wanted to say that there is a 10-by-10 gravel pit where the runoff is located, as far as my understanding is, so that the runoff from the Caso residence is directed into this gravel pit for drainage. And I just wanted to address that really quickly. And as far as our...the issues on the appeal, what we're requesting, and I've been given some leeway to ask for, a larger drainage capacity. There was a 4-by-4, I believe, that was proposed gravel pit, and in my discussions with Matt Clark, who briefed me on this yesterday, he requested that it actually be a large...go by 5-by-5, so more of a 10-foot square area, similar to the one that's located on the Caso property. So that is really all that I have to address. Everything else was really covered well by staff.
All right, thank you, Mr. Matis. Any questions, Mr. Matis? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. I...you know, I appreciate your recommending a larger gravel pit, but how do we know that this gravel pit is going to accommodate the runoff and is going to solve the problem? I mean, we have no sort of scientific evidence or any hydrologist saying that this is what needs to be done, or is what is appropriate for the size of the roof, or that the Caso property is contributing to the problem. I'm just curious. I...you know, I think it's one thing to throw around numbers, and that's fine, and that may solve the problem, but we don't have any ability to know whether, in fact, it will solve the problem, do we?
Question.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, no hydrological...hydrological report was done analyzing the amount of runoff that would come from that 350-square-foot addition, and specifically the needed capacity to intercept that runoff and retain it for a period of time and let it percolate into the ground. I did run initially, when the project first came to my attention with the appeal, I did run it by the building division and asked what they would typically do with a project like this. Typically, for an addition of that size, drainage doesn't even come into play, especially on a flat lot like that, and it's not really even a concern of theirs. So if that gives any indication as to whether or not an additional gravel pit beyond nothing would certainly be an improvement, and I might let the applicant speak to how they came up with the 4-foot diameter drainage pit in terms of meeting capacity.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyson.
Well, and the only thing that I was going to add, and I think Mr. Tuttle just asked, but we can say with some surety that whatever we put on there, whatever gravel pit, is going to improve the situation that exists today without an addition. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Boyson, that's staff's understanding by tying in the existing uncovered or enclosed patio, which currently has no gutter system and just runs right off. By tying that into the gravel pit, it would improve existing condition.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I'm...if I'm understanding correctly, both properties have been recently developed. Not developed in the sense of...
Modified.
Modified, yes. Thank you. The property to the south has hard surfaces. My guess is that those surfaces were added when the remodeling took place. The property to the north does not appear to have any hard surfaces outside of the building envelope itself. 300 square feet, 350 square feet, pretty small surface. I think the standard typical response to that is to use some sort of perforated tubing, run from the guttering and into the ground, and that typically adequately handles it. If the neighbors have expressed some concern, do we have any...do we have any staff, other than the neighbor's complaint? Is there any staff experience with runoff waters from the roof creating flooding in the area? I mean, is this just anecdotal from the neighbor?
Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Schmizer. Most of the evidence we have received as far as the drainage issue on the appellant's property, they did submit some reports and some photographic evidence suggesting there is some ponding on their property. There was never any determination of where that was coming from, however, and what the direct cause of that was. Certainly, it's partially due to the Goodman's property in their...in its existing form, but there's other properties in the area and runoff from the road that could also make its way to the Caso's property. So at this point in time, there...the evidence is anecdotal as far as the sources of the runoff into the appellant's property, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if they had hired some...some sort of a hydrologist to do a study as to where the...where the water that was ponding on their property had come from. No? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmizer. If the Good...Mr. Tuttle, if the Goodmans had decided to put in a little patio, just lay some concrete, would they have required a permit? What is the size here? Six...I don't know, 20 by 15 or whatever it is? Would they have required...no, it wouldn't have.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, there would...if you were just to put in hard surface instead of your lawn, there would be no permit associated with that, only if it's above 30 inches of a deck.
So if they would have done that, it would have the same effect as this. There would have been a water runoff. So it's just, you know, I...pardon me. I just...and then the percolation process there in the corner, I think that if you put a picture of the...where is the picture of the lot? Can you put a picture of the lot up on top? No, just the...there we...we need...I'm sorry, we need...yes, that one right there. I would think that all this area right here, that all this...this water on this side is going to flow that way, and this is going to flow this way, and that's going to flow that way. Am I correct in the pitch of the roof?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, there...yeah, the general pitch of the roof would direct water that way. There is, as I mentioned, a very gentle natural gradient that directs water to the southwest of the property.
Okay, this is the south...going in this...this direction is southwest. This is the southwest corner?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, southwest would be going in this direction.
Oh, this...that corner. Okay. So only of the total surface area, only about 50% is going to be generated for runoff to go down in this area. Well, no, this would come off over this way. So that would be a way...and where is the neighbor? Is the neighbor here? Where is the neighbor?
Neighbor's directly south.
Right, where it says gravel pit, right in there. I'm sorry, I'm hitting your head there, Ms. Contreras. All right.
Neighbor runs across this...they share a common property boundary right here.
I know the council wants to jump in on this. Go ahead, Mr. Appellant.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to suggest that the appellant's representative has indicated he's finished his presentation. Unless you have questions for him, maybe you want to move on to applicant.
All right, I don't. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I'll let you rebuttal after, all right? We just had a couple of questions. Okay, we'll...I'll save that for later. We'll ask the Pilar Caso's representatives to appear...to come before us? The Goodman...oh, I'm sorry, the Goodmans, the Goodmans. Got these folks, makes the Hatfields and the McCoys here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just had a few comments. I will try not to take too long. We originally got the appeal on June 27th, so it's been three months that we've been trying to mitigate...to mediate this issue with our neighbors. We've asked Alex to contact them with proposals. They have chosen not to attend any meetings that we've given or...and set up for a variety of meeting dates, and we've also made ourselves available at any time during that period, and they've chosen not to take advantage of that. I'm not real fond of the pits myself. It was our architect that recommended doing it as a way of trying to mitigate and solve the problem as quickly as possible so we could get moving. I would actually prefer we have a little brick patio. We're planning on pulling that in anyways, and we were planning on putting on gutters anyways on the whole property. We were going to replace the existing ones because they're holy, so we wanted to get some new ones in, which would be fine with me. I did want to point out the...they are asking for a 25-square-foot gravel pit, not a 20...or not a 16-square-foot gravel pit. Had a few other things that I thought I'd mention. Our rear landscaping towards the fence that we share with our neighbor is a raised planter bed, actually. So the chance of water flowing in that direction is actually very remote, since it's quite high, and actually, we do get quite a bit of pooling and really heavy rain, and it does permeate the ground afterwards quite naturally. Trying to think what else that I'd want to mention. We...yeah, we did try to mediate, so obviously, I'd prefer not to do any continuance and like to get moving on that. I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Any other comment...further comment from my fellow commissioners?
Thank you very...do you have a question?
Yes, if I could, Mr. Chair. Mr. Goodman, the suggestion has been made that perhaps the appellant would be satisfied with a 5-by-5 gravel pit, or you're just not...that's not your will, sir?
Well, I mean, I'd prefer not to have a gravel pit at all in my yard if I didn't have to. I personally don't think it's necessary, but we proposed it as a way of trying to move things along as quickly as possible and be glad to do that if that's necessary.
You'd be glad to do the 5-by-5 if that's necessary?
Well, I'd prefer not to do the 5-by-5. I'd like to stick with the 4-by-4, but, you know, if we have to do it, we have to do it. And it's just...it's, you know, I actually think it's actually going to worsen the problem because the gravel pit's going to be closer to their end, and when that overflows, it's going to go into their yard. So we're actually directing water in the direction of their house rather than having it naturally go across our quite green yard with lots of landscaping that would naturally occur in the ground, so...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just ask another question of Mr. Goodman. The gravel pits proposed for the rear of the property where there may be a slight gradient difference from the front? Maybe not. Is it fairly flat, your property's flat?
Yeah, it is pretty flat. We do have a very clay...clay soil, so it does absorb a lot of water, and I know our neighbor has had a lot of problems with the soil issues.
Can I ask you, we see where the gravel pit is located in the back. Was there any consideration to putting it up front, to tying in all the drainage systems so that the water would go up front?
No, I don't think we actually considered that. You know, it's a fairly...we have a lawn up front, so putting a gravel pit up in the front would be kind of distracting, but...
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to, I guess, be a hydrologist here and look at this, and I don't think that we've really adequately looked at what might help mitigate some of the...all the runoff from the roof. And that was one of my concerns, is that putting it in the back wouldn't necessarily help. It might...the pit's going to fill up, and the water's going to continue onward, and it seems like if you had it in front, that it would be less of a problem. I realize we're sort of, you know, mincing hairs here. Just one last question. You talked about the planter that you have along the southern property line. When it rains hard in successive days, does your water pond in front of that planter?
Yep.
It does pond there. Okay, so there is some drainage problems on the site.
If you guess if you call it that. I mean, I think naturally, you know, when you get heavy rain, there's pooling of water.
Well, you know, I have clay soil, and when it heavy rains, it all goes down. I suspect it's probably the planter that's holding it back there. Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Brown. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Goodman. We'll allow you to rebuttal for a couple of minutes, Mr. Mathies.
I have no...
No rebuttal? All right, thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the staff. Mr. Tuttle, you have any further comments before we bring it back?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, just a couple of points of clarification. At this point, the gravel pit is designed as a 4-foot diameter in a circular format, which is actually less overall square footage than if it were a 4-by-4 square or a 5-by-5 square, so just to clarify that. Also, just a point of clarification on the record, this is actually the first addition for the Goodman's property. The Casos did put in a significant addition a couple of years ago, but for the Goodman's, this is the first. And just lastly, staff would just comment that initially, again, when I did have this appeal in front of me, I did speak with people in grading, and, you know, one of them, just somewhat off the cuff, but did suggest that, you know, some sort of drainage pit or something like that could address this type of problem. And especially with clay...clay-type soils, they tend to be a little less porous and less permeable than, say, sandy soils, so having a gravel pit during a heavy storm certainly could fill up, but it would be likely more permeable than if it were just like clay soils.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Brown, this is the second district item. How do you want to proceed?
Well, Mr. Chair, I...I understand the appellant's concern about the ponding on his property and the drainage issues. I do wonder if some of it is not caused by a lot of that permeable surface that's the driveway leading to his property, and also the driveway around the southern edge of the property, and looks like that's where all the ponding. I suspect that that's where a lot of the issues do occur, because they do have a little bit of open space on the eastern side, but not much. I appreciate the fact that the applicant is willing to do this pit. I don't think I would want a 4-by-4-by-4 pit in my backyard. I would be concerned about just being a hazard, and there's going to be maintenance issues involved. But I would think that that's a pretty good compromise to try to solve this problem, and that would be my recommendation, if that's the commission's inclination. Unless I hear otherwise, then I would just make the motion as recommended in the staff report, with the exception that in the conditions, I don't believe that it lists what the depth of this pit is supposed to be. Is that correct? It just says a 4-foot diameter gravel pit.
We could add a 4-foot deep to specify.
I think you're going to just, if we would...okay, so then my recommendation, the motion, would be just to accept...accept staff's language as revised in Attachment C to include the depth of the pit.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, may I have just a bit of clarification in that...
Yes, Commissioner Schmizer.
If the runoff tubing is not perforated, that means that all that water's going to go into that pit. You might actually be creating more of a problem than it is to have perforated tubing that allows at least some of the water to be dispelled into the yard as it works its way toward the pit. So...and typically, what people will do is they'll run a little gravel around that, you know, where the trench is for that, you know, black tubing that's used. They'll put a little gravel in it in the They'll put a little gravel in it, in the trench, and some of the water can dispel, and then it'll get to wherever it's going. Most of the time, there's not some sort of a pit. So I just would see if the applicant, I just want to, I think the applicant's concern, I think that the, you know, the applicant's concern about it going into this pit and the possibility of it actually running over the pit, if particularly if they're tying in all the rest of their currently unguttered house into this gutter, might cause more of a problem than just your conventional, the conventional way that roof runoff is done. So I just ask that question.
Mr. Chair.
Looks like the applicant has something to say, I don't know.
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Just a question for Mr. Tuttle. The downspouts of the current gutter system are some in the front, and then this new one in the back, is that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, the current gutter system on the main part of the house has downspouts in various locations around the house. The only thing that is unguttered at this point is their existing rear, rear covered patio. And as Commissioner Smizer indicated, that, that would be the only one that would then be tied into the gravel pit in addition to the proposed new structure, new addition. And in response to Mr. Commissioner Smizer, we could certainly craft the project description slightly different to accommodate that type of perforated tubing.
Commissioner Brown, continue.
No, I'm ready to.
Did we have a second, Commissioner Boyson?
Mr. Chair, I'll second it.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Smizer, are you wanting with the condition for the tubing, revised condition?
Mr. Chair, I am, and fellow commissioner, what I'm concerned about maybe is, I see that the applicant is standing that maybe wants to respond to that, my suggestion. I don't want to create a problem that maybe isn't a problem. Maybe there's some clarification. I know that the comment's been closed, but.
Would you like to hear from the?
Would you like to hear from?
Yes, please.
Please come up and identify yourself.
Yeah, good morning, I'm Lauren Solan, I'm the architect on the project. To address your, your concern with that, I mean, I think there are, we were sort of well aware at the beginning when this appeal was filed that, you know, in terms of runoff, there are two schools of thought. First one being that in a flat lot situation like this, I mean, in its most extreme condition, this lot only has a one and a half percent slope to it. And that whole neighborhood kind of works its way gradually towards the Tascadaro Creek to the southwest, so water's going to go where water goes. The Goodman's, because their entire backyard is, at this point, free of hardscape, one civil engineer that I talked to just briefly said, well, you're probably better off just letting the water sheet flow across that open landscaping and find its way into the ground. We proposed the gravel pit as a sort of mitigating element to see if we could appease the, the neighbors. We picked the location because it would take it to the eastern rear portion. And from that point, as, as the planner has pointed out, it would slope kind of to the southwest from there. So, so the idea would be to discharge the water from the new addition and from the old rear covered porch into that pit. Let it take what it will into the soil, the rest of it would bubble out, but at least it would direct it in a little bit more advantageous manner. Another possibility is something along the lines of what you were suggesting, which you were really kind of describing a typical French drain, which would be to do a trench along the rear property line with perforated pipe and gravel in it and disperse it along the whole length of the, of the rear property line. So you've got really three possible ways of tackling this. You know, in my opinion, probably number one is still the best, just because they do have so much green area and there's a lot more opportunity for the, for the water to naturally find its way into the, into the soil.
All right, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I'm just.
Commissioner Boyson?
Well, I was just going to, anecdotally, I, I've run into a lot of drainage problems on lots having done quite a bit of development and that sort of thing. And, you know, you don't realize there's hardpan until you grade, and all of a sudden, somebody moves in there and starts watering their plants and this sort of thing, which is one of the reasons why you try and get everything drained to the street. And of course, we don't have that benefit right here. I mean, we've solved it similar to what Commissioner Smizer has talked about. We've done the gravel pits, we've done river rock, you know, streams, you know, in the backyard, just, you know, some sort of swale design or something like that. And you're right, there, there is not going to be one answer, whether, you know, this may exacerbate the problem by, by putting in the gravel pit. But, you know, and I don't know what the answer to that is, rather than, say, two years later, we want to take a look at this thing and see which was right. I mean, we don't want to start going into that with land use permits. So, you know, I, I'll kind of go with whatever the appellant's and the, and the applicant are, are, you know, happy with. If the appellant say that they're happy with the gravel pit, let's give the gravel pit, and the applicants are willing to put it in, let's, let's give the gravel pit a try. And, and perhaps, you know, some of Commissioner Smizer's suggestions of throwing some perforated tubing with some, some gravel somewhere else, just to take any secondary runoff would be a good idea, but.
I think the bottom line here is that this addition is so small that the, the end result is going to be negligible. So, thank you for your time.
All right, I have a question, Mr. Solan. A new technique, where you have the bearings, you know, north so and so west, then you have in parentheses R1 and R2, what does that signify, R1 and R2? It's, normally when you have the distance, you know, you give a bearing, and then you give a distance between hack marks on the end of a drawing. I suspect this is your drawing that we have here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of missing your.
Okay, you have, when you have straight lines, you have a bearing, right? You show the bearing, you know, north eighty-five degrees, so many minutes, west one-nineteen.
That's taken directly off the assessor's surveyor maps, those are, those are coordinates, you know, that.
No, I know, I understand latitude and longitude, but I don't understand an R2. Usually it, in parentheses, you have R1 and R2, and usually you.
Occasionally, that, that designates that there's some sort of a radius involved, if I'm under.
Well, there's no, these are straight lines.
Straight lines.
You have no idea what it means.
Then I guess I don't, I'm sorry. I plead ignorance.
Something new to me, usually it just says the distance, you know, from one, because you don't have, you don't show the distance from one hack mark to the other. Usually you do, okay, fine, technical problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll modify my, my second then to just include the staff's recommendation.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, then I think we have the, the motion and the second, and we're ready to proceed for the vote, thank you.
Ms. Contreras, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
All right, thank you very much. With that, the Planning Commission will take a short break to set up for the next item. Planning Commission will come back to order, we're on item number four. What is item number four? General Coastal Plan, chapter three, six, and four, oh, 3.6 and four preamble updates. Ms. Contreras, could you read that into the record, please?
Thank you. The following is a hearing to consider and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding proposed amendments to sections 3.6 and 4 of the Santa Barbara County Coastal Plan.
All right, thank you. Mr. John Day?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm John Day from the Energy Division. My presentation will only take a couple of minutes. This hearing is to consider minor amendments to the Santa Barbara Coastal Plan to update and delete outdated information. The proposed amendments are to chapters 3.6 and 4 relating to industrial and energy development and oil and gas infrastructure, as, as detailed in the staff report. These are the sections that will be amended. The information we are updating has not been revised since 1992. It describes the facilities and the state of the oil and gas industry as they were in the 1980s and early 1990s. Most of the information is now obsolete. Also, section 3.6.1 contains citations from the California Coastal Act, which have become outdated due to amendments in the Coastal Act over the years. The updates will make the citations consistent with the current Coastal Act language. Lastly, the amendments delete a lot of detailed descriptions of the offshore oil and gas infrastructure, offshore oil and gas leases, and anticipated development circa 1992. This descriptive detail is inappropriate in the coastal plan because it rapidly becomes outdated. In just a matter of a few years, it's already outdated. And it requires a comprehensive plan amendment to update. The Energy Division website is a much more suitable place for this general information about facilities, projects, offshore leases, and so forth, since the, since the website is regularly updated. A large amount of historic and current information is available on our website, and it continues to be updated on a daily and weekly basis. The updates do not affect, the coastal plan updates do not affect any policies and do not have any substantive effect, except where the Coastal Act policies have been revised, in which case we're being, coming into consistency with them. The updates affect preambles and descriptive background material only. Coastal Commission staff have reviewed the amendments and told us they should qualify as a minor amendment to the coastal plan, and they'll not require a full commission hearing. We've shared the language with industry representatives and in the environmental community, and we've heard no negative comments. So, staff recommends your commission adopt the resolution included in attachment A of the staff report, recommending to the Board of Supervisors to adopt the SEQA finding determining that the amendments are not subject to SEQA, and adopt the proposed amendments. For the record, I need to point out an error in section 2.0 on the first page of the staff report. The words "and section 15378," as shown in the slide, should be deleted to be consistent with the resolution. That's the end of my presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Day. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Day. You know, I, I think it's a great idea to put more information, background information on the website, it's more readily accessible to the community. My only question is, do you have a protocol or procedure for ensuring that your websites are kept up to date, that links are always working? Because that's important, too, people, nothing more disconcerting than going to a link and whoops, goes nowhere, so, thank you.
This is a regular part of the, the planners' chores. We, we bring it up in staff meeting at least every few weeks. And, and we have one person who is in charge, at this point, it's Kathy Pfeifer, is in charge of making sure that everybody's keeping it updated.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any further questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on the subject? Will they all please line up on that wall? Seeing no one rise, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back, and we'll bring it right back to the Planning Commission. What's, this is something that affects the entire county, it's something that updates all our documents, takes out unnecessary language, and makes our living documents a little easier to work with. What's a wish of the commission? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would recommend that we accept staff's language on the staff report, and with the one change.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Boyson?
Mr. Chair is the only district without any coastal area, I will second the motion.
All right, thank you very much. All right, no further discussion. Ms. Contreras, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five to zero.
All right, and we win another one. All right, we'll take a short, one-minute break just to set up for the next item. Planning Commission will come back to order, we're on item number five, and this is a coastal plan chap, I'm sorry, this is Eastern Goleta Valley Residential Design Guidelines. Ms. Contreras, could you read that into the record, please?
Thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of County Executive Office Comprehensive Planning Division to consider the following: Adoption of the Eastern Goleta Valley Residential Guidelines and Amending the County's Land Use and Development Codes.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Derek Johnson is a project manager?
Good morning, Chairman Valencia, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name's Derek Johnson, I'm a project manager with the CEO's Comprehensive Planning Division, and I'm here today to present a project that was approved in our 2005, 2006 work plan and budget, which called for the development of residential design guidelines. I have Mr. Robin Donaldson here with me today, who was a consultant that the county retained to assist us in developing these residential design guidelines. We have roughly a 20-minute presentation to give you a brief overview of the design guidelines and to cover the recommendations. If you have any questions, please interrupt us, we'll be happy to answer those. The slide in front of you is the proposed boundaries of the Goleta Design Guidelines area. It encompasses the second district unincorporated area of Goleta. The actual overlay district that is being proposed is shown in green up on the screen. The yellow parcels are vacant parcels in the current overlay area. The, towards the bottom of the map, there's a blue line which indicates the coastal zone. The recommendations and resolutions for today are to adopt two resolutions, recommending that the board adopt the guidelines in the D overlay zone district in the Eastern Goleta Valley inland and coastal areas. Those are shown as attachment G and H in your staff report. Furthermore, we recommend that the board adopt, that your commission recommend that the board adopt the SEQA findings found in attachment A, and the zoning maps amendments shown in attachment E, and amendments to the Land Use and Development Code, tax amendments shown in attachment F. And then finally, that the board, that you recommend that the board accept the notice of exemption, exemption shown as attachment B. A little bit of background regarding these residential design guidelines. These were an action item that were called for in the 1993 community plan. It was a mitigation identified in the EIR process. As I mentioned, the board initiated the project in 2005. We retained Schuman and Donaldson Architects to assist us. In the process of developing these design guidelines, we looked to many jurisdictions throughout the state. There are literally dozens and dozens of design guidelines that are being developed in response to changes to neighborhoods and their, and their corresponding character. And a lot of the policies and images that are in, included in these drafts were found throughout those other documents. In the process of obtaining public input, we held a very widely noticed public charrette in Goleta. On June the 3rd of this past year, we received some very good input and public comment. And we had two public hearings with the Southern Board of Architectural Review, and had another hearing with the Historic Landmarks Advisory Commission. The overall purpose and goal of the guidelines is to provide a guidance for homeowners and designers to create projects that contribute to community design objectives, to provide the tools to the bar and decision-makers, and for applicants to develop projects and properly review them, and to expedite and speed up the review process so that it's clear to applicants what the county is expecting from them when they submit an application in terms of the design qualities. Some of the benefits associated with these residential design guidelines that we believe. Some of the benefits associated with these residential design guidelines that we believe will become apparent is that the Eastern Goleta Valley will experience better design, enhanced property values. Part of the mission and goals of the Board of Architectural Review, but the various different bodies, is to ensure and enhance property values within the respective areas. We believe, again, it'll have more efficient design review process and will result in fewer appeals to this planning commission. Furthermore, property owners, as I mentioned, and decision-makers will have the tools to prepare the plans and then review the applications. In terms of the approach of the guidelines, we saw them as an educational and design tool, meaning that for the average applicant, they were written for them to be able to pick up and understand a lot of these design concepts fairly quickly. Also, it's easy for a contractor, an architect, to pick them up and use them appropriately, and, again, as a design evaluation tool for the S-Bar, and if a project is appealed, for the planning commission. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Robin, who's going to talk a little bit about the design guidelines themselves.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning. Chairman Valencia, honorable commissioners. I've had the -- thank you, Terry. I've had the -- it's been a lot of fun, actually, to be involved with these. As you know, I kind of see this from several perspectives. One, as a SBAR member and a BAR member for the last five years, and have had a chance to review a good deal of the projects that come through in this area, and have seen a lot of the issues that have worked and haven't worked. Also, I am an architect planner, so I sit on the other side of the table as well, and then to work with the county and actually go through the mechanizations of a guideline that hopefully would be mainly educational for our applicants. I want to really emphasize that. One of the things that I've found, being on the board, is projects will often come forward, particularly in this area that we're talking about, and we've had to struggle with the applicants in terms of communicating what the distinctions that the Board of Architecture -- the board is using to look at their projects. And I've found doing this document really has just put down onto paper the kind of thinking that the Board of Architectural Review does when they're looking at projects. So, starting broadly in terms of how a project relates to the neighborhood, which, to begin with, is a notion that a lot of applicants haven't really had a chance, or even anybody suggested that they need to think about that from the beginning. We do have what we call a good neighbor policy in this. We emphasize that the applicants meet with their direct neighbors, talk to them, understand what's working, what's not going to work for their neighborhood, before it ends up in a BAR or an appeal situation. Also, just even the notion of site planning and where to put an addition and why it might matter. There's elements within the guidelines that talk about that as well. We have a section here which we call Elements of Design, which basically reminds me of my first quarter of architecture school, and I mean that in a good way, where it talks about mass, bulk, and scale, how to think about buildings, and gives people an opportunity to predigest some of the comments that they may get when they come to a BAR and we start using a certain kind of language and approach. We touch on the residential second units, which has turned into be a fairly significant design issue in this area, including garage conversions and so on. The landscaping issues, all of these kinds of issues that add up to projects making a qualitative impact on a project and are consistent with the kind of review and the kind of conversation that the board would have. Let's move to the next slide. One of the things that we're trying to address, obviously, in the guidelines is where, you know, what kind of design issues do have a negative impact on a neighborhood, and it goes back to that educational idea of letting people know that there's other options for designing and adding second stories and so on that have less impact visually, in terms of overlook issues and all sorts of issues that we talk about in here, that can -- let's go to the positive -- can -- you may have a result that's closer to what we're seeing here in terms of these examples. And these are examples that, in both cases, these are examples that we've taken from the area. These are additions that were done that are more in line with our guidelines and how we would typically recommend applicants to come in to approach a project. Next slide. One of the things that we've done in the guidelines, just to try and make it as clear as possible for anybody using the guidelines, is we have these photos that I think you've seen, where we've had kind of the good projects and the projects that aren't as strong, and we have on the slide here where we recommend that a second story, massing, for instance, would be pushed back on the property rather than coming out forward, that you break up the form of that second-story addition by matching the roof type and the cable type and window types. In the slide on the right, which is a negative, you'll see how there's different roof forms used on that addition. Again, all of these are the kinds of discussions that are had at the Board of Architecture Review. We want to give the applicant a leg up before they come in and see us by giving these kinds of examples. Pictures tell a thousand -- picture tells, what, a thousand stories? A thousand words. Also, you know, the issue of garage conversions, there's -- which slide do we have here? Yeah. In this case, you see two garage conversions, one on the left, where we consider that a nicely done garage conversion. The driveway has been done and a nice paver. The landscaping is a nice, kind of drought-tolerant landscaping that we would recommend, and also then the actual enclosure of the garage. The windows match. They've repeated a shutter detail and so on, where the garage conversion integrates nicely to the existing house. The example on the right, obviously, they've added over the garage conversion a second story that comes out forward, and also, they've had to -- they've gone in and basically paved over, concreted over, their entire front yard. So, the guidelines recommend that you go more towards the other direction, make that as clear as possible for anybody coming in. Also, there's landscape section where we talk about different aspects of the landscape. An interesting part that came out of the public workshops, there was a lot of discussion about landscape in the public workshops, a lot of concerns about people who are growing hedges, six-foot hedges, right at the sidewalk line in some of the subdivisions, and actually, it was kind of surprising in the public workshop how much concern there was, not only about these additions and so on that are typically out of scale, maybe with the neighbors, but also the impact of different landscaping that's been going on in these neighborhoods. And we're recommending that people keep the landscape in more of a drought-tolerant type of landscape and keep it more open in terms of how it relates to the neighbors and the overall impact of the neighborhood. BAR triggers. One of the things -- let me go on to this. A lot of discussion, obviously, about, once these guidelines are in place, what would actually trigger a review with the BAR. At the moment, what we've looked at is any new one- or two-family dwelling. The way the code is at the moment, if somebody's on a flat lot that isn't ridgeline, they could do a whole new dwelling and not come in front of the BAR. So, what we're attempting to do is basically capture all new structures. Demolished and reconstructed one-family, two-family dwellings, when 50% or more of existing gross floor area is demolished. This is one of the issues that we've noticed, and we've noticed on the BAR, has been remodels that essentially are rebuilding of homes. And they come in as a remodel application, and by the time they get underway, they've basically completely rebuilt a home without any kind of BAR review. Second- and third-floor additions, we're saying, basically, any addition, second, third-story, anything that goes up would be captured under a BAR trigger. Conversions of attached or detached garages, this is the garage conversion that we were just talking about. Generally, those are visible from the street, and we're interested in projects that do have a visual impact on the neighborhood. Any addition of more than 1,000 square feet of gross floor area, or 50% or more of the gross floor area of a principal in one-family or two-family dwelling that existed on the lot as of the effective adoption date. I think that's pretty self-evident. One of the things that this does, this 1,000-square-foot, this was also discussed a bit in the public hearings and so on, is this does what we're interested in doing. People do have a loophole, by the way. They could do a 999-square-foot addition in their backyard and keep it on the ground level and meet the zoning requirements and never have to come to the BAR. We're trying to give some outs where people can have an option, but those would be options that don't have an impact on the neighborhood visually. Any structural alterations to one- to two-family dwellings that are substantially visible from the street frontage. Again, the emphasis being here is we're trying to capture projects that are visible and have a visual impact on the neighborhoods. Case load. Thank you.
In terms of the projects and in terms of the triggers and what effect they'll have on the overall bar workload, staff went back and looked back at the 2005 ministerial permits. There were roughly 257 that were processed in 2005 in the S-Bar area. The number of ministerial permits that went to the bar in 2005 was 15. If you applied the respective triggers that were just shown to you, roughly 51 new cases would be sent to the S-Bar for additional review. You can see the various different categories in which trigger would then send those respective projects to the bar for that review. In terms of the caseload and the workload, the planning commission recalls that the bars were split up into the various different geographical areas this past January. When the bar, when the S-Bar was created, there was an estimate that it would have roughly 110 cases. If you added the 15 existing cases that it saw last year and added the new 51 cases, that would bring up a total to 66 additional -- 66 total cases from the D overlay area. We've been working with the bar members and asking them how they're going to manage this additional caseload. It's their strong belief, and I believe the S-Bar chairwoman is here today to talk to the planning commission, that it's their intent to manage this additional caseload through the consent calendar. Additionally, they have been struggling in meeting their current caseload demand, and they're currently working on structuring their meeting schedule so they're meeting more frequently. And lastly, if you've been reading the newspaper, you've probably seen a lot of discussion relative to the City of Santa Barbara's Neighborhood Protection Ordinance, in which case there's been a lot of controversy generated about floor area ratios. And the working committee that was appointed by Supervisor Rose and staff and our consultant, we concluded that floor area ratios was not the best initial approach in terms of how to address design issues in the Goleta area. Particularly, we felt that the FAR was -- that mathematical equation did not result in good design. We wanted this to be an incremental approach to getting something on the ground quick. We understood from watching the city's process that introducing FARs would be somewhat controversial and that we would probably not be to the planning commission for quite some time if we decided to take that approach. The approach that we have taken, of course, is neighborhood-centered, which is consistent with what the Goleta Valley residents have requested. And at the same time, we have -- there are no new policies that are being proposed as part of these guidelines. There's emphasis on existing and current county policies, and we really tried, in not looking at bars, excuse me, at FARs, we wanted to get this adopted and implemented in early So, in conclusion, the design guidelines will increase the S-Bar caseload and applicant costs. However, we believe that the Eastern Goleta Valley will experience better design, have an enhanced property values, a more efficient design review process, and then fewer appeals to this planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question, Mr. Johnson. Since you don't -- you're not going to do FARs, if somebody has a 7,000-square-foot lot, standard lots, and they come in with a 2,500-square-foot house, that fits pretty well in there, but if all of a sudden they come in with a 4,000-square-foot, I mean, you know, that's kind of out of place in a 7,000-square-foot lot. How do you deal with that? Do we have?
The guidelines, excuse me, Chairman Valencia, members of the commission, the guidelines are structured in a manner so that the project is considered in its neighborhood context. So, you look at the corresponding neighborhood, see what are the other houses in the neighborhood? Are they 2,000, 3,000 square feet? If you want a 4,000-square-foot, the bar will make a determination of whether that is appropriate or not. If they do believe that that is appropriate for this type of neighborhood, and it is a neighborhood that's in transition, then what the guidelines call for is holding that particular project to a very high design standard. So, in the future, when another project wants to use it as an example, as a bellwether for their design project, it'll be something that is a very high standard that the community really believes in.
Yeah, that's right. I remember reading about that in the Moray Mesa area where they had some concerns. I mean, they were very standard lots, and somebody -- there's nothing wrong with, you know, growing from 1,300 square feet to 18, 2200, 25, 26, 4,000, 4,500. It's kind of a little massive. I believe Commissioner Brown was first.
I think my fellow commissioner to my right.
Oh. Commissioner Boyson?
That's all right. Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question on this. It wasn't quite clear in the staff report and in the presentation, perhaps, I'm just missing it. I just want to make sure, are the increased cost going to be fully funded through the increased land use fees?
The additional review costs for bar review will be paid wholly by the applicant, and that's the $860 fee that they will pay to cover the cost for staff to analyze whether the project is consistent with the guidelines, and plus to cover the hearing costs in front of the bar.
All increased costs associated with this project will be funded through land use fees.
Chairman Valencia, Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Boyson, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And who was next?
I'll go.
Ladies first?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think probably, as you know, I was involved in working in these, with these guidelines and working with staff, and I would really like to spend a moment in recognizing their efforts in writing these, developing them, producing them, six months. I have to admit, not much gets done in six months in the county in a project like this, so it's really a credit to that staff, and I would like to recognize, I don't know where they are, our intern who came down from Cal Poly today, Mr. Wiley, who ably manned the computer and really helped move things forward, and Ms. Deisty, who put up with a lot of my comments and emailing back and forth, and Mr. Johnson, who was really adamant about adding some things and keeping things in there and how really important all of this was. I would just like to waffle on, because this has been my baby, and it's been my, sort of, my thrust of my community activism over the last several years. On the South Coast, there's been a long history of quality architectural design. You've seen it in Santa Barbara. It's gone on into other areas. Summerland has design guidelines, Montecito. Even when Old Town Goleta was under county's purview, they established this really wonderful document called Architecture and Design Guidelines for Old Town. And this really was, I think, a standard in terms of sort of setting out the visual qualities of what is important for the community, and I just see what we're doing here in these guidelines as an extension of that. Really, there are no new policies, as Mr. Johnson indicated. Neighborhood compatibility is discussed in the land use element, in the housing element, and in the community plan, and really, all that we're doing here is just articulating what it is and how to achieve it. A lot of people ask about it, but so far as I know, there's been no county document that's really dealt with it, and that's, I think, the beauty of this document is that it -- And that's, I think, the beauty of this document is that it could be an overarching document for the entire county because it does quite well articulate all those various issues. And I think, as Mr. Donaldson indicates, it's about the elements of design, about how you do this, how you make these houses compatible. I think you know that I sit on a design review board in another jurisdiction, and this kind of document would be very welcome because it does lay out those standards and the expectations upfront. Mr. Johnson failed to mention that he did a presentation before the Galleta Valley Chamber of Commerce yesterday, and I believe for Citizens Planning Association also previously. And then I think that many in the community welcome this because it says, well, this is what we expect. These are the community standards. The current Galleta community plan and the one that is being visioned by the Visioning Group lays out that there should be guidelines for enhancing the neighborhoods. And this certainly is not about preserving neighborhoods, if some have concerns about that. It's not that at all. Neighborhoods undergo change, and we want to see quality positive changes because I don't think that that has always happened in the past. I would just like to add that this is going to be new for the Eastern Galleta Valley, and as such, it's also going to be new for the S-Bar. Not that they haven't reviewed projects in the area, they have. This is just sort of going to expand their review. But I would like the opportunity for the Comprehensive Planning Division to do a look back in six months to see, is this working? Can we improve the procedures? What can we do to make sure that it's better for the public, better for the staff, better for the design professionals who are on the SBAR? And I'm not sure quite how to do that. I hope maybe you have some money left over in your budget, Mr. McGinnis, that we can do that formally. And I guess my only other comment is, you know, under the current scheme, projects that have passed by this Planning Commission, I'm thinking of some tracks in the Galleta area, under the terms of their conditions of approval, when they add in addition as small as 180 square feet, they get design review. In fact, I've always was wondering about that. There was a project not too far from where I live, and they were adding 180 square feet, and that got design review. And I always thought, gee, somehow that didn't seem really fair when we have many of these older neighborhoods where changes are, the kinds of changes are really much greater than a simple 180-square-foot addition, which, under the triggers, our triggers, would not even make it to SBAR review. So I would like to think that this is a great accommodation. I think there were some in the community who wanted to see tighter triggers, but I think that Ms. Doll, the chair, was right, that probably these are pretty good. And I appreciate the helpfulness of staff and in working with them. I felt like I was a staff member for a while, but it was great. It was a very positive experience, and I hope that these guidelines will be a very positive experience for the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner McCune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to you, Commissioner Brown, for all the extra work and effort you put into it. I know it was labor of love, and we're all going to reap the benefits of your efforts over the coming years. My own experience in the Toro Canyon area, where we had a design overlay added as part of the Toro Canyon Plan, suggests that there'll be a period of time in which the architectural community, the design community, as well as homeowners, become familiar with these guidelines. And during that time, it may be that we have one or two or more appeals to this board from the results of the S-Bar. And I think that's healthy because I really believe that we are buying into the same principles, these same guidelines, and would use this as a document to review the action of any appealed determination by the BAR. So really, what we're going to narrow down the review cases to, I think, is where the BAR, for reasons of a particular case, vary from the guidelines and say, you know, we don't have a rigid mathematical approach. There is such a thing as an exceptional lot or a particular neighborhood. And in those cases, I would just ask that the BAR be particularly careful to spell out the findings that have led you to vary from one or more of the guidelines. Because I think really, we can understand the benefit of an exception, too, if we understand the basis for it. And sometimes, up to now, the minutes of the BAR have been scattered. The comments aren't weighed. If someone makes a comment, there's no indication of, do others on the panel agree with it? Disagree? Is it just one board member? So I think the process, not only in Galleta, but throughout the county, would benefit from a greater, a greater spelling out of the findings, to the extent that there's an anticipation, this could be one that's going to be appealed. And secondly, it was mentioned, and you've anticipated a problem that I can see, and that is, when there's an exception made, particularly as to a second-story addition, for example, or a height limit, as going beyond the guidelines, it's amazing to me how applicants smell out that one exception, and that becomes, as you say, the bellwether for future proposals. So I think even for the benefit of the BAR, it's going to help to really say, this is an exception to the guidelines, it's merited, but here are all the other conditions we're attaching to this to make it work. And so the applicant, the subsequent applicant doesn't just get the benefit of the extra height or the extra setback reduction or whatever it is, but there are specific reasons for it. So I guess what I'm saying is, this is a great start and a great template to start from, and we've just got some work ahead, particularly you have some work ahead in implementing these guidelines as written.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Smizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple notes that I just wanted to say. First, what I want to say is appreciation to staff and to Commissioner Brown for her work on this, on this design guideline. It is never easy to come up with the community standard. You kind of have to, each community is different. And I think that you've done an excellent job in organizing these guidelines in an understandable and well-thought-out way. They're easy to follow. The, you know, the table of contents, just the whole, it just, it lays out in a reasonable and easy way to follow. The other things that I want to compliment you are on is the actual drawings in the, just about every section has a drawing that explains visually what the written material is, and that the drawings are exceptionally clear, which sometimes that's not always the case. The drawings may be more confusing or the written part more confusing, but in this case, they actually do complement one another. And one can almost look at the drawings and understand ahead of time what the written material is going to say. So that's very helpful. One thing that, a couple things that I'm concerned about, though, and I would agree with my fellow Commissioner Brown, that this kind of document, the way that it's organized, the way that it is put together in reflecting a community standard of the Galleta Valley, Eastern Galleta Valley, can be, could be adopted as a format. What I would caution you on, though, is this. Every community is different. Every community standard is different. That's why we went to BARs in various regions. And so, for example, the design overlay in the San Onofre Valley met with harsh resistance. There's a significant difference between the Eastern Galleta Valley, small plots, houses close together, and five- and 10-acre zoning, where people feel like D-overlay was obtrusive and intrusive and just too heavy-handed in a rural community, where neighbors really can't see into your backyard. So I would, while I would think that the design, that this kind of an approach is one that is overarching and could be adopted, the specifics certainly will vary from place to place, community to community. I also want to say that, you know, a community like Solvang, for example, which is a municipality, has its own review of BAR standards, are actually much stricter than this and go much further. So each community has its own flavor, and so it's, I think that this document reflects why one flavor doesn't fit all. And I think you've done an excellent job in finding the right standard for Eastern Galleta Valley. I'm a little concerned about the applicant costs increasing. It's already pretty expensive for anyone to do development in Santa Barbara County. The idea that we're going to increase it almost $1,000 is troublesome to me. The idea that we're going to increase the workload really five times the Santa Bar, the Southern Bar, is troubling, only in that I would hate to see applicants that would not have been captured in this prior to and would have been an over-the-counter process to all of a sudden be waiting months in order to put a window in their front, in the front, in the front of their house, or a small addition that wouldn't have been captured now is captured and have to wait months for, to begin the process. So I would challenge staff that this be well-thought-out in its implementation so that applicants are not somehow bottlenecked in the process. The other thing that I would do is I would certainly agree with Commissioner Brown that a review needs to be done. And I would ask that part of that review, look at how many, I'd want to know whether these new design elements in any way chill development or enhance development. If we see a dramatic reduction in permitting, then I think we would want to know why that is. If, on the other hand, you know, the same amount of permitting is moving along, I think we'd want to also take that into account and understand that probably our process is working well. So, and then the other piece that I'd want to know is how many projects are coming in at the edges? How many are avoiding the guidelines by bringing their application just up to the edge, but no further? Because I think that will also tell us how the community is responding to the guidelines, and whether they're embracing them or whether they're just looking for opportunities to circumvent them. That would be my, again, the general flavor of my comments, I hope you take them as being extremely positive. I think you did an excellent job, and I applaud you for your work and the effort that went into it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Boyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is probably a good idea to get some of our ideas out so that we can get proper staff response as well as response from the committee and that sort of thing. And I think Commissioner Cooney kind of hit it on the head for me in that, you know, the unintended consequence of things like this that can creep up, because I'll guarantee you, there are some real smart general contractors and draftsmen and architects out there that'll figure out ways to get around these guidelines. And, you know, what's the minimum I can do? And then all of a sudden, we end up with something that we really didn't want. We're going to have to make sure that we have whatever language we need in there to correct those holes as they come up. I think that, from the positive standpoint, I mean, obviously, we're at least giving, I mean, we're giving some concrete standards and some guidelines for applicants when they come in, rather than have them go out and spend $30,000 on design, come in and go, no, that's not what we have in mind. And so, at least they kind of have an idea of where they're going from day one, and if they come up with something out of the ordinary, they're going to have to take their chances. So my concerns are, and I apologize, Commissioner Brown, but when you said countywide, I just, I cringed. This is not a North County issue. We don't need this sort of guideline at this point in time in North County. We're, you know, we'll figure it out. But I do respect that Galleta and those areas south of the Gabiota Tunnel are different, are different. And I will respect those differences. I am concerned, though, with anything that just hints of taking away of property rights. And, you know, we're kind of pushing that envelope for me here, so I still need to work with that before we get down to a specific recommendation. My biggest concern, I just want to make sure, too, that is this really what the citizenry of Galleta wants, or is it what the people that are very active in the community want? And there is a difference. I mean, is this the guy that's working 60 hours a week and comes home and mows his lawn on the weekend and anticipates the government is going to be okay to him? And then all of a sudden, when, you know, he saves enough money to do his home addition, he finds out, Jesus, like, you know, there's increased fees, there's, you know, I can't do what I originally intended to and thought I could when I bought the house, that sort of thing. That's one of my biggest concerns on here, and I don't know where we go versus, you know, having some sort of a vote on this thing, or a Gallup poll, or whatever we come up with. But I, you know, I'm very leery going forward as we implement these things, that I just want to make sure that this is really what the community wants. And no offense to Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Brown is, I wish that I had her passion for community activism. And I really do appreciate it and respect it, and, but we have to realize, and I realize that, you know, there are people that actually think different than I do. I don't understand why, but they do. So those are my concerns going into this, and I'll be interested to hear responses and also public comment. I'm sure that you guys have talked about this in the committee meetings. We've only had six days to really review it, so that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. I just want to remind everybody that this is the Planning Commission and not the View. Commissioner Brown.
Today, Mr. Chair, may have to be the View. I would just like to respond to some of the comments. When I, it's interesting in that the findings for the BARs, I believe, are all the same, whether it's S-Bar, M-Bar, C-Bar, or N-Bar. They have to make, I believe compatibility is one of the findings, is that not? Is that?
Neighborhood compatibility.
Okay. Neighborhood compatibility. And I, you know, my thought was that the principles and the standards are the same. I'm not advocating this for any other area. Like, really, this is, I think, more of an urban issue, just because, as you indicated, Mr. Smizer, that, you know, that people are crowded together, and the visual resource issue is a much different focus than certainly out in the rural areas. Staff shared with me, what I thought was interesting, was that costs for design review are going to be less for Galleta applicants than other areas. Is that not correct? Under the current costs?
Chairman Valencia, Commissioner Brown, that is correct. And we have a table we can show you if you're so inclined to look at the survey of other neighboring jurisdictions.
But also, what about for the county? I understood it was for...
Chairman Valencia, Commissioner Brown, that is correct as well. We've been able to reduce the fee specifically for Galleta by combining the noticing for the BAR hearing with the noticing that will be issued for when the land use application is submitted.
Okay. So discount for Galleta, so that's great. And I guess my last thought for Commissioner Boyson, and, you know, I understand that there will be some unintended consequences from this, and hopefully, that when... there will be some unintended consequences from this, and hopefully that when staff goes back and looks at it, that they will consider the issues. But, you know, my, my thinking is, is this better than no guidelines? And I think that some guidelines are better than no guidelines. And this is, this is a start. It may be overreaching, it may be, we don't know until they're put in place, and hopefully that, that review period will give us some idea and understanding. So that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. You know, many years back when I got started in this, I, the first, one of the first commissions I got appointed to was the Beautification Commission in Lompoc. And based, what we were very concerned about is beautifying the city of Lompoc, getting trees, keeping the medians clean, making sure that 7,000 square foot lots were the R1, where the, people didn't know what, when I would speak about 7,000 square feet in R1, they had no idea what I was talking about, you know? And they said, well, we, we need lots, but they never knew the dimensions of a lot. And they didn't realize that, you know, somebody came in and said, gosh, we can build a lot of houses in here, and they wanted to build 900 square foot homes, you know, back in 1965, '66. And they just wanted to put a square box without any looks on it. At that point, I was appointed also to the city's BAR, Board of Architectural Review, and we started looking at some of these things. And the, the guys in the blue suede shoes who wanted to come in and make the quick buck, they were going to come in and we're going to build something that was needed. However, forget about anything that looked nice, because they didn't have time for that. Said, we'll give you a little bit of gingerbread. Gingerbread was the big thing. And Mr. Donaldson is, he's a pioneer in this, so he remembers gingerbread, you know? Get some gingerbread on that house, and that's it. And so they put a slab on one, one way, or one window going down, and, you know, it was terrible. But that was the old sun-kissed design, you know? Had one stamp and boom, put them out. And they built about 6,000 or 7,000 of those units, and they met the need, but the people had to come out and fix those and remodel them. And they've spent a lot of money doing some of those. Working on these things, most of those people that worked on these beautification and BA, as we called it, BAR at the time, just devoted their life to it, you know? And I learned a lot from them. I went in there not knowing much, and I learned quite a bit from it. So when I come here, and again, I see all these folks that have worked so long trying to beautify the Eastern Galita Valley, and when I drive through the Eastern Galita Valley, they've done a good job, you know? The stewards in the past have done a good job. It's very pretty, there are a lot of trees, and so on, you know? And I'd like to see that continue throughout the county, and I hope that this is a footprint for other areas in, in the county. I hope not just Galita Valley. And I hope that residential guidelines in general becomes a magazine of one type or another with, and it says Lompoc Valley on it. I know that Commissioner Boyson is very concerned about his area, but, you know, we'll let each area deal with it. But it's very important, we have some buildings that have been built in, in the Lompoc Valley that are very nice, but hardly any trees they put in. It seemed like one-gallon trees. I know they were five-gallon trees, but it's been five years, and it still looks desolate, you know? So we have to have these standards, and we have to be concerned, because we're going to be looking at that for the next 50 years. Those that are going to be here, not me, but these young people here in the commission. I certainly support these designed guidelines, and I hope that we move forward with always improving them, and that they become a living document, that we're always looking for some better way. And there's ways of doing this without raising the costs on the, on the property owner. But you look at, I looked at the document that you, when you made your presentation, Mr. Johnson, and this, one of the biggest houses in here that you showed, as you enter the house, there is no entryway. I mean, the, you're outside in the elements, you're outside in the elements, and you open the door to a 4,000 square foot house. How horrible. This one, this one right here. There's no porch on there. I mean, I know porch is an old word from the 1950s. What do you call a portisserie now, or something, a French name for it, or something? But, you know, how could they put a door on a wall like that? And guess what? About three years ago, or two years ago, we were willing, working on a development here, dealing in Galita, in the Galita area, and they were going to build some million-dollar homes there. And they were just like that. There was no cover. You came out, and if it was raining and you're standing there, it would pour on you because there was no cover, you know? I know there are some architects that probably missed 101, porch 101, but, but I think, in general, most of them were listening. So at any rate, I think it's a great job that you're doing. And with this, I'm going to open the public hearing. We have one speaker, Mrs. Patty Close. She's still here. And at the same time, want to acknowledge a letter that we received from Ms. Connie Hanna and Kathy McCammon, in support of the project. And I'm sorry we made you, we got so long-winded here and made you wait so long, Ms. Patty Close.
Pardon me? Over the microphone. Over this way? Okay, thanks. I just represent the Coalition for Sensible Planning and Beth Oaks Woods, and we just wanted to make sure that you understand that we are very excited about what you've done here and very appreciative. And because we were so appreciative, I had a very carefully-prepared statement, which I left at home. And it wasn't enough time to go back. So I just wanted to highlight three areas that we're appreciative about. One is the environmental concerns, things like drainage and soil protection, and all the, the careful attention that you paid to that in this document. The second was the aesthetic architecture sensitivity, that we're all concerned about how our community looks. And I think that you've done a great job in, in making sure that is going to happen. And then protecting existing neighborhoods from intrusive changes, at the same time protecting property rights. We, the Coalition for Sensible Planning thinks this is sensible planning. And we also want to recognize that you all don't get paid much for all the hours you put in, and those of us who are involved in the community know what a sacrifice this is to do this kind of work, and we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Close. Anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Chairman Valencia, members of the commission, my name is Catherine Dole. I'm the chair of the SBAR. And I'd just like to say a few words about how enthusiastic we are, all of us across the board, about these guidelines. We've participated in, in their refinement several times. We've had the opportunity to review them, and I just, I hope that you can come to appreciate how, how much they're going to help us along in, in our process of reviewing these urban residential additions. And also, I think that as far as the time spent, I mean, this, our board is used to reviewing for the last, this is my 50th year on the board, and four of those years were spent reviewing all of the county projects. So for us, it's not a daunting workload increase when we look at these extra 66 cases. And we also are hoping that the majority of these cases can be reviewed at the conceptual level and then move on to preliminary final on consent. So we're not looking, we're not anticipating a huge, a huge burden, as far as we're concerned. So that's all I have to say, unless you have any questions.
Yes, we have a question for you. Commissioner Brown?
Not a, not a question, Mr. Chair, but a, but a statement. What I thought was interesting in this process, as we went forward, what I saw with several projects in the Galita Valley is that the BAR's comments changed to sort of reflect more of these guidelines. I was thinking of a project that you saw fairly recently, and I, I just thought that that was like, wow, this is really great. They're already in, they're sort of in effect, because these are the standards that should be followed, and sort of overarching guidelines, anyway, for sort of compatibility. And I, I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate the bar taking the time to look at them and make the suggestions, and I thought they were good suggestions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, you want to come?
Chairman Valencia, members of the Planning Commission, I did want to respond to a couple comments briefly that were made from the DIAS. And in terms of how staff plans on rolling these guidelines out upon approval is, we've been working with the local AIA and the Contractors Association, making sure that both of those groups have been made aware of this process, invited them to participate along the way. One of our members, Mr. Burke, who's a part of our committee, is a, is a developer, contractor, architect, and he's had a project in the Eastern Galita Valley that I believe has been stalled out at the bar for a number, a number of, of months. And he saw these particular design guidelines as a drastic improvement, because it was made clear to him on the front end of what the expectations were in terms of design. In terms of the public comment that we've received in the course of all of the hearings in front of the bar, in front of the Historic Landmark Advisory Committee, in our charrette, most of the comments were overwhelmingly supportive. We made an effort to hold the, the workshops on, on the weekend as well, so we could get full participation. There were a few members of the public who did express concerns about the cost, and it did express concerns about the process in terms of delays to their project. And we, you know, looked at ways in working with the bar, how we can expedite in terms of the process, and I believe Kate just mentioned about how they plan on doing that on their In terms of the loopholes that will come about through the implementation, we certainly saw in advance where, what types of development are these triggers going to encourage as people seek to not have their project reviewed by the bar? And it was somewhat intentional. The way that you can avoid having your project come to the bar is by placing your addition to the back of the existing structure, outside of the view of the street, less than 1,000 square feet, or less than, than 50% of the existing principal structure. So that was, was intentional to try to push the type of, the additions in a certain part of the lot where it would be the most efficient use of land for that particular owner, probably in terms of costs, because when you, when you don't go up to the second floor, usually those costs of those additions are, are less. So that was thought out in, in advance, and because we wanted to make sure that if, if the project wasn't going to have a visual impact on the neighborhood, then really, it's in a project that shouldn't be, that should not be seen by the bar.
All right. Thank you very much. And as we bring it back ready for, preparing for a motion, Mr. McGuinness, I'd like to say that your group has done an outstanding job. Thank you very much. And before I go to the commission, there's a city in our community that's done a great job. The city of Bulton has fixed up the Avenue of Flags, and I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to see it, but it is beautiful, what they've done there for the people to view, and it's a pleasure driving through there and going to have lunch at any of those places. Commissioner Smizer.
I was just wondering where that city was, Mr. Commissioner.
No, it's good. Commissioner Boyson?
It's a lovely city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing it up. A lovely city that everyone should visit, and they have done an excellent job. In fact, the, they, just to segue on there, the, the mayor and the city council of Galita, excuse me, of Bulton, held a opening day for their, really a park that they've created. And they have art, statues, statuaries that they've put in there, a lot of trees, and it's, it's just a, you know, I think it serves as an example for what other cities can do.
It is maintained beautifully. It's just gorgeous. Thank you. Commissioner Boyson.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do just want to say that I am going to be supporting the recommendation that I anticipate Commissioner Brown to be forthcoming. One, because this was a project that was initiated by the Board of Supervisors. I think the, the project as defined has been completed to, in an outstanding manner, and I, I, I believe that it represents the wishes of the people of Galita. And so I, I can support this, even though I have some hesitations of, of more government being better government.
All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Boyson. Commissioner Brown, this is your...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, with that, and with Commissioner Boyson's support, and my North County brethren's support, I appreciate that, because we know that, as the chair indicated, and Commissioner Smizer seconded, that visual resources are important to our community. And I, again, want to thank staff, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Donaldson, Mr. McGuinness, Ms. Deisty, Mr. Wiley over there, I think you all did a great job, and those community members who participated. So with that, I would like to accept the staff's, I'd like to move that we accept the three items to adopt the various resolutions and to make the various recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, as indicated in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. And I'd like to add an addendum, that we thank all the people who work so hard that are unrecognized on this project. Thank you very much for all this. And with that, Ms. Contreras, could you read the record?
Commissioner Boyson?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Mr. Smizer?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Vote carries five zeros.
Thank you very much. That concludes the Planning Commission work for today. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.[1709.65]